Hello.
Morning Commissioner, can you hear me okay?
Well, hi Curly, yes, thank you.
Okay, you are in the meeting.
Thank you sir.
Good morning, it's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the August 31st meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Would you please join me for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning Brad.
Assuming everyone is using the Zoom client, if you select the participants tab, toward the bottom of the screen, that will reveal a raise hand function toward the lower right-hand portion of your screen. If you select your raise hand portion, that will let the host know that you would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed today on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak and they're already here waiting?
Yes Chairman Sparks, I'm pleased that the entire commission is actually present. I was originally misled by the, by the spacing and everything. At any rate, I'm Abner Purney, I'm 101 over Hills, Salina, Kansas, and I'm here concerning both a request and a question for the commissioners. Most interesting thing that I've done, one of the things over the last forty years that I've lived here as I followed both the city and county commission, it's interesting to realize that the city commission theoretically has an election of up to twenty-eight thousand voters, but two thousand will get you elected and I've been elected three times as a city commissioner. The weirdest thing that has happened in the whole forty years that I'm aware of is the present ordinance proposed by petition. And I passed out copies to all of you today and the interesting thing about this petition is, it limits the power of the city of Salinas Commission and defers, I think the actual phrase is this ordinance people, well wait a minute now where is it? Any rate, the actual phrase is that it defers emergency actions as outlined in this proposed ordinance to the county. And so it affects the county commission as much as it affects the city commission. So my simple request is that the city or that the county review this and make an actual statement in the form of some kind of resolution or memo to the public as to your general stand on this ordinance and whether you would support it. Or not. It has some very strange things in it. Mainly it's focused against the current emergency and against masking and restrictions on travel and business and vaccinations even. But it also has restrictions on curfews, citizens being in public places, things that could occur in the event of a tornado, a wildfire, a flood, all of which would be first recognized probably by the county's emergency preparedness staff. I mean, the tornado alerts are issued by the county and the alarms go off. So I take that as a declaration of an emergency and if there was damage to say the commercial area at I-70 and Ninth Street, we would need to be able to publicly close some of those businesses and get people to stay home and stay out of the way and that sort of thing. Well, this ordinance says the city can't do that if it passes. And if it stands up to a court challenge that the city is also going to do. But who knows how long the court charge challenge will take. The other weird thing about or unknown thing about this kind of ordinance is if it does pass, is that it lasts at least ten years. So in some respects, we're setting a policy for ten years where the city has limited emergency response capabilities and the county is the lead. So I would ask that you actually discuss this some in public or private and make a statement.
We will get with our attorney and check this out and see where this goes. The first time I've seen this, so we'll look into it. Thank you.
The other thing I have is the, is the ongoing COVID crisis and I would like to know, based largely on a thing that just came out yesterday from, from the nation's children's hospitals.
I'm sorry, your three minutes has passed.
Oh, this is second subject. This is a second subject, can I have another three minutes? May I have another three minutes for a second subject? I'll talk as fast as I can. The simple question is, are you vaccinated? Each one of you please respond because the, and I'm sponsored, face this off a thing I saw from the nation's children hospital saying, "We call on leaders of public, private sectors and the American public to help us protect our children. All eligible populations should be vaccinated. Everyone should mask responsibly, particularly during school and while attending large gatherings." I'm thinking this is a small gathering. "And all should adhere to proven safe practices, social distancing and hand washing." And you do have social distancing in this meeting, so I appreciate that. But the question is, are our leaders, our elected officials fighting COVID or are we standing back to see if it runs however it's going to run? So Commissioner Wees, are you vaccinated?
Rather personal question, but I don't mind answering it. Yes, I am vaccinated.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Sparks?
And I don't feel that it's, you have the right to ask that, but you do, I mean, anybody can ask.
I mean, if you're a leader of our community, we would like to know if you are leading for the fight against COVID or you're leading for the fight to let COVID run its course.
For the fighting for the COVID.
For, for COVID or for against COVID?
I'm, I'm against COVID. I'm for the fight.
Okay. Mr. Shadwick? Mr. Vidrickson?
I'm like Commissioner Wees, I feel somewhat offended that you'd be asking this, but I am vaccinated. I was vaccinated on the very first day and I've been tested since then.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm vaccinated by the way, at the earliest possible I could get in. Commissioner White? Is Commissioner White not going to answer? Anyway, thank you very much and I thank you for your leadership and just one more comment, I know my time's up. The other weird thing about this whole petition is the petition ordinance is it kind of opens the door again to the discussion of should we just have a unified county government?
Thank you. All right. Any other person from the public?
Yes.
And please state your name and address.
Good morning to everybody. My name is Mac Filapando. I'm here today to represent briefly the citizens of the city, city of New Cambria. I am the mayor out there. We've made a discovery about the flooding issues that we're having and some of the things that I think the county could help us with a great deal if they would. Commissioner Shadwick, I've requested your presence at our last meeting. You were unable to attend. So I would like to address all of you regarding this issue. We need to clean the ditch out between Cunningham on, on the west side of Cunningham between Second Street and Stimel Road. If that were done, we could alleviate an awful lot of the flooding in the city. I just need some help from you folks telling me how I need to go about approaching that issue and getting it done. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look into it. Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, we do have somebody in the Zoom meeting with their hand raised. Mr. Guevaras, unmute and speak.
Hey, good morning everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I've got class here in about ten minutes. I'm going out of turn. I know there's an agenda item. Talk about South Niles again. So just real quick, I wanted to add something before I had to run and that is, I didn't think about this the other day, but another possibility does exist to get gravelled access to our, or improved access to our house. And that is the mile of Niles between Tinkler and Assaria. Y'all had spent quite a bit of time and money to improve that road and it's in really good shape. And as I understand it, if it's correct, the quarter mile that is already designated as improved. So that will leave three quarters of a mile of earth and road to, to improve and you wouldn't have to do the dirt work or ditch work, I don't believe. So I think it'd be a lot less expense and time involved for the county. So I just wanted to throw it out there. Thanks for, for allowing me to zoom in.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda, which will consist of approval of tax role adjustment, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from this consent agenda? Hearing no objections, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second the motion.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move into action items. Item one.
National Recovery Month proclamation with Valerie Hicks, recovery coach with Central Kansas Foundation.
Good morning Valerie.
Good morning. So mental health and addiction affect communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people can and do recover. Each September, we recognize the millions of lives that have been transformed through recovery with National Recovery Month in hopes of increasing awareness and understanding around mental health and addiction. During National Recovery Month, we celebrate the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other chronic health conditions like hypertension, diabetes and heart disease. It is a chance to educate others about recovery from addiction and mental health. The effective, the effectiveness of treatment and recovery support services and that recovery is possible. The 2021 National Recovery Month theme is recovery is for everyone. Every person, every family, every community. A strong reminder, not only to those in recovery, but those who support them, that recovery belongs to all of us. This year, we ask for you all to be a part of the solution. The stigma surrounding mental health and addiction continues to create barriers for individuals to receive the help they need to get better. By shifting our mindset around how we speak about mental health and addiction and how we treat mental health and addiction, we can truly start to make an impact that saves lives. When we share our stories and our own journey, we prove that each journey to recovery is a unique one, filled with its own challenges and successes. Most of all, we, we show that those with mental health and addiction are human beings first and always. For the above reasons, I am asking the citizens of Celine County to join me in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month.
Thank you. And I see here that you have a program here setting to have some other things happening during.
We do. We have our first color run. It starts at 9:00 AM on September 11th, that morning at Oakdale Park and then the recovery celebration is to follow at 11:00.
Well, thank you. And I have your signature here. Let me sign this.
In the meantime, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we declare September 2021 as National Recovery Month in Celine County.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item two.
RFA 221-21 Website Committee Recommendation and Permission to Negotiate with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director, joined by Dave Irving.
Good morning Brad.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am Dave Irving. I don't think I've ever met you guys before. I work over at Commune Corrections and I'm the volunteer chairman for the web committee. So Brad asked me to propose today because he's got to dip out early so he can manage all the Zoom stuff for you guys. However, we're here today. Last week, it was awarded to go ahead with, you know, in the budget to have a new website rebuild and design. We obviously seen, you know, that it was kind of time due. COVID brought that to the forefront of how we need to disseminate information and have things more available to our constituents and also make it easier for all the department heads, you know, both on their workflow and to get information out. So what we are doing today is we have a request for action and that is to move into contract negotiations with GovBuild. They are actually a local company out of Manhattan, Kansas. What we did during this whole process, we met for many, many weeks, many weeks. And we took twenty-six proposals from companies across the country and we disseminated them amongst the committee and graded it based on our RFP, which we had a scoring system. In the end, we then lowered it to eleven vendors, which we had interviewed. And during that time, we compared it with the request for proposal and just also looked at things such as what was their budget? If they were local, how well they could work with the department heads and be made available to each and every one of us here. And that is what came to be the determination that GovBuild was the best solution moving forward for Celine County. So we are asking to go forward with GovBuild and contract negotiations and to approve this as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the commission? I'd like to know how many people were on this committee and who were they as far as our department's representation?
Well, I believe we had seven to start with, which then got lower to six. There over there was one of them. We also had Sean Kokonaski from the Celine County Sheriff's Office. You have to refresh my mind.
Jeremy Bowman from Expo Center. We had a representative from Roden Bridge, had a representative from the Senior Center, Rosie Walter. The representative from the Health Department was Sarah Bernhardt. And representative from whom I'm missing? Oh, the register, the, the city county building, which was the location, was Phil Urban and Tonya, Tonya Moran Diaz.
And we did put out an original request for department heads if they want to be included in the web committee. And those were the, the people that were brought to us to be volunteers for it. And it was strictly volunteers though.
Well, and that's what I was looking for. It was the cross-representation that would be needed from various departments.
And our, and our goal going forward, and we made this very clear in our interviews, was that during the research phase of what we are looking to get accomplished with the website is that they would be made available to each department head. They would interview the departments, you know, request what they would want accomplished with the, the website and just how they are going to work as a team. So throughout the process, GovBuild said they have a very extensive research process and will be making themselves available and it helps that they are also local and they can send, you know, people down here to assist with that.
Okay, so, so there isn't a, you have yet to determine a cost.
There is a proposed cost from GovBuild. And I know the budget was approved last week. You may want to go into what that monetary was, but I do have the amount.
Cost estimate.
Yeah, the, the cost estimate. Originally, they proposed thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. However, they are working with the environmental department already, you know, developing forums and other things for them. And so they gave us an eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollar discount because to, to combine those two forces. So their cost estimate right now is nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is substantially lower than a lot of the other places that we had interviewed. Yep, and that is a one-time fee.
So were we voting to okay that amount or okay just the negotiations?
Just negotiations.
Fair enough, okay.
And after this then, is there an ongoing, will they be the ones that will be ongoing to keep it updated and keep it going?
Well, they, it will be hosted with their data centers. And so there is a maintenance fee that gets included in that. We also did discuss, hey, you know, four, five, six years down the road, what would a redesign look like and how much would that cost? And so those are certain things that we would go into negotiation with them.
But our county department heads won't be able to go in and actually change anything inside this?
No, actually, the, the content management system that they would use would provide, you know, who we would designate as to have availability to that website and create content. So that is one thing that was number one priority, instead of relying on the IT department to do all the work that, you know, each department head would have a limited capabilities to create their own content.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Anyone from the public could wish to speak? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the web committee to proceed with contract negotiations with GovBuild.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 221-21 Website Committee Recommendation and Permission to Negotiate. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time Commissioner.
Thank you. We're going to item three.
RFA 222-21 Fallen Land Purchase with Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning Commissioner. I'm going to read the request for action. Brad's got, going to get in there and pull up some visuals here. This request for action is to purchase parcel of land in the town of Fallen, Kansas. The motor grader operator operating out of this territory is retiring at the end of September. The motor grader is currently parked on land owned by the employee in Fallen, Kansas. He is selling this property to the adjacent landowner. Fallen is the best suited place for which to operate a motor grader for this territory. We have identified a parcel of land to purchase for two thousand dollars. This also extends to long-range planning this department has been working on for several years, which is to get Celine County motor graders parked on Celine County property. If you, the alternatives for action are approve the purchase of the parcel of land in Fallen for two thousand, do not approve the purchase of land and direct staff to an alternative. Staff recommends approving the purchase of the land in Fallen. This location allows the motor grader less travel time and more grading time since it will not have to travel to where it needs to be. It also allows the snow removal portion of the operator's duties to be completed more efficiently. The budget impact, the total cost including title and recording fees is estimated to be about twenty-five hundred dollars. This money will come out of the road and bridge line item, road and bridge building and ground, which has an unencumbered balance of seventeen thousand, two hundred and five dollars and seventy-two cents.
If you look at the map over there where it says seven, it says Smith right there and Fallen is located right directly in the center of that territory. So this is where that motor grader would operate from. Next slide please. Currently, the area marked in red is where the motor grader is parked now. The parcel of land that we're, we're currently discussing purchase is just north of there. East of there is the sewer ponds for Fallen, but that little parcel of land is more than big enough to accommodate a motor grader, snow plow and a fuel tank.
Okay. Thank you Darren. Is there any questions or comments by the commission?
One question Darren, do you foresee more expenditures as far as fencing, security, electricity?
There will be some, you know, to get electricity to the property. I'm, I'm expecting the total cost probably not to exceed ten thousand dollars by the time you get electricity there. Get a greater pad bill, buy a little shed and those types of things.
Will we have to put a fuel tank and everything out there at that same location?
We will. The current fuel tank I've discovered is not a double wall line tank, so we will be purchasing a new fuel tank.
That's what, do we not lease those, but we actually purchase those?
We actually own those. That, that motor grader currently, there's, it has a plug-in on it that we wire into a twelve-volt motor. So where it's parked now, there is no electricity. So we would want to get electricity to this place so we could provide a light for security. So we would want to get electricity to this place so we could, uh, provide a light for security and also, um, electricity to fuel the, um, the block heater.
Well, it sounds like the two thousand dollars is, is pretty minimal cost to get the land. The expense is going to be in, in getting the other stuff ready. Um, I'm still kind of concerned and has nothing to do with this, but, uh, concerned that, uh, you know, for safety's sake and, uh, may, uh, vandalism and those kinds of things. I don't know if we have much of that out with those areas, but, uh, those are always a concern, so.
We, we don't typically have issues with that. Uh, as, as I've worked here, um, it's, it's not a big issue. One of the, the big pluses for this piece of property is, is right next to the paved road. So, uh, with no unobstructed view, you know, anybody in there would be, would be seen, but.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Anyone from the public who'd wish to speak on this?
Norman Manlesline. Offhand, Darren, do you know who done the title search?
I believe it's going to be land title company, um, depending upon the action today taken by the commission.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Chairman, I move we approve by signature the purchase of the parcel in Fallen, Kansas for two thousand dollars as requested by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-two dash twenty-one Fallen land purchase. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Darren. We'll move to item four.
RFA two-two-three dash two-one South Niles Road Upgrade Recommendation with Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Andy.
I have a, a, an aerial map, um, Brad's going to put up here if you'd like to look at that. This is to consider Todd Kevor's request to upgrade Niles Road going south one mile from K-4 Highway. From an earth road to a gravel road or enter into an agreement with Mr. Kevor's that would allow him to place approved aggregates on the roadway at his expense. Mr. Kevor's has purchased the property in the southwest corner of the intersection of Niles and Tinkler Road. This property was formerly the Gypson Valley Shooting Place. It operated under a conditional use permit and had an agreement to place aggregate on the roadway. Specifically, Niles Road going south of K-4, one mile to Tinkler Road. Some alternatives for actions to consider is one, enter into agreement that would allow Mr. Kevor's to place aggregates on one mile of Niles Road going south of K-4 to Tinkler Road at his expense. Two, direct Roden Bridge to upgrade one mile of Niles Road going south of K-4 Highway to Tinkler Road. Three, direct Roden Bridge staff to upgrade Tinkler Road going one mile west of Whitmore Road to Niles Road. Four, elect to allow Niles and Tinkler Road to remain earth classified and maintained as such. Staff recommends that if the direction to upgrading a road with county forces, Tinkler Road between Whitmore and Niles Road be chosen. The road has more right of way, would take less work to complete, and would not need to be closed for any length of time to replace a box structure. We prefer road reclassification over agreements. History has shown that agreements can be forgotten about, lost in the shuffle, or misinterpreted. Property owners tend to change hands and Roden Bridge staff retires or moves on. There's a certain amount of risk and liability that comes with allowing property owners to, to place aggregates on the roadway themselves. However, if directed to do so, an agreement could be drawn up with the help of legal counsel. Aggregate costs for the upgrade of the roadway would be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range and would come from the gravel road upgrade, safety line item in the Roden Bridge budget. This line item currently has an unencumbered balance of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission?
I've got a few here. Uh, number one, does Gypson Valley Shooting Place still exist?
No.
So that agreement, uh, is null and void and we don't have, we won't have to deal with that anymore. Uh, my, my concern with, with your recommendation is that it would still leave two miles of, of rural travel for the, uh, resident instead of one if we upgrade Niles Road.
Correct.
Uh, I, I agree with you in, in getting rid of, uh, any of the agreements that we might have, uh, with, with residents and putting it back into the Roden Bridge Department's hands. However, I, I still think even if it's a little bit more expensive, it would be better in the long run to do that one mile coming south from K-4 Highway on Niles Road. Uh, that's my opinion. And if you wish to object to that, or tell me why that, what doesn't work, why go right ahead?
I don't, I don't wish to object to that. The reason that I selected Tinkler Road over Niles Road is there's currently a box structure on Niles Road that will eventually need to be replaced. And when it's replaced, it will either add ten to fifteen thousand dollars to the cost of that project to provide a shoe fly, which is a way for the residents to go around. Or, um, we will end up putting gravel on Tinkler Road anyway, so they have a way to get in and out while that project's completed.
Well, if it's eventually, if the box culvert's eventually going to have to be replaced, it's going to have to be replaced eventually. So I mean, I don't see why that would be, would stand in our way. Uh, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm looking for, for the E, uh, the, make it easy for the, for the homeowner to only drive one mile of rural road versus requiring them to drive two miles. Because that's what it would be if the other way around. That's, that's where I'm asking.
But, and I want to, I, I'm coming because it's like, I, I want to thank you for taking me out and showing me. And, and it's like, I, I, that was the same thought process I had till I actually went out and, and drove the road. And, and, and Darren then explained to me why there's benefits of going to, doing the tinker. And one of the major ones is, is, is going out and looking at it is that, that mile road of tinker, if we upgrade it now, the thing is there's, there's one little area that has like two or three trees. So all rest of it's open. So it's even when you snow and you have the snow removal will be a lot easier. It's a, the road width is already there, the ditch is already there. It'll be a whole lot less to fix it, to upgrade it. But the other thing is, is there, like, when it's dry, yes, the, the homeowner still has Niles Road to go straight to K-4. His life is going not change at all, really. The thing about it is, is when there is inclement weather, if we get back to like we had a few years ago where each spring was wet, wet, wet so long, is that I see that the going to, on the Tinkler Road going east from there is going to be a whole lot, lot better to take care of a whole lot of the problems and issues. So, I mean, but that was just, I just learned a whole lot. Yeah, it was neat.
I'm, 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 uh, I wish that Mr. Kevor's could be here during this discussion because I, I would like to hear his opinion on that, so.
I would like to address his, his, um, um, thought process of upgrading Niles going south to this area. The reason that we didn't select that was because the culvert, there is also a box, uh, a large box structure at the south end of, uh, Niles Road on that stretch. And when we replaced that culvert pipe, um, it was designed to be an earth road. Okay, so that means, um, if it was to be a gravel road, we probably should have put a box there because of the drainage. And if you look at the, the area there where it comes into that pond, there to the east, there is a little box culvert across Tinkler Road. So when we put that culvert in there, it wasn't ever designed to be, the, the water's going to go, they're going to top that road with that culvert there.
As I think about it, uh, I mean, our percentage of, of, uh, days that you can't travel a specific road because of the weather are probably, are really pretty minimal. Uh, so I'll, I'll back up from what I'm saying and, and go along with the recommendation of the Roden Bridge Department, uh, for the Tinkler Road improvement. He can still travel Niles Road on days that it's nice anyway, and, and you make it only one mile, but.
Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, in our earlier conversations with this, uh, Mr. Kevor's was amicable to either route, I believe. He might have had a preference, but either one would work. Have we asked, um, the school district, uh, bus routes and, and how they service that down there? What meets their needs the, the best?
I have not, Mr. Lee.
Jim, if I might throw something in there, I would doubt that, uh, that the bu- bus routes included, uh, Niles Road to begin with because there hasn't been anybody living down there. But now I assume he had school-aged children. Um, so, I mean, it's a legitimate question, but they would probably take, they wouldn't come Niles Road anyway. I mean, going off the other road is, I don't know about a turnaround.
I would tell you, um, just from the way other buses and, and most bus routes run, um, when the weather's nice, they take the earth roads. Did, if that makes any sense to you, you know, unless there's a bridge. But when the weather, weather's nice, they, they take the earth roads. Whatever's convenient for them.
And I talked to the, uh, Transportation Director out of Southeast Saline. And, and to him, it really didn't matter, but he was glad that we was getting into this. But I, I'm, that was what he was saying is that as long as the weather's great, they're probably coming up Niles Road. But if there's a better access when it is rainy and stuff, that they would use the better road. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that we've included them and we need to further include them, uh, in my opinion, because I know we're, I know that corner right there. A turnaround in, in climate weather might be an issue with a, with a full-size school bus. So we do need to include them in on that and maybe even look at that in our own plans. But again, uh, I'm going to go with, with your, uh, recommendation.
And I had just talked to him. I did not specifically ask him which would he prefer. But we did discuss how when it was dry, they'd probably still come up Niles Road. But either way is, we just need to get a way to get in there when it's nasty. So any other question or comments? Anyone from the public could wish to speak. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we direct Roden Bridge to upgrade Tinkler Road from Whitmore to Niles Road as outlined in RFA two-two-three dash twenty-one.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-three dash twenty-one South Niles Road Upgrade Recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Darren. Item five.
RFA two-two-five dash two-one Bid Award for Brookville Road Pipelining Project with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning, Justin Mater.
Morning Commissioners. So I'm here this morning to, uh, take action on a Saline County Roden Bridge Department request to award the bid for Brookville Road pipelining projects. Sealed bids were opened on August eleventh at eleven AM. And we received bids from three contractors. Uh, in your packet, you should have, um, a copy of the title sheet, which shows the, um, each site location as well as a copy of the bid tabulations for a little more details of the bid. Eleven pipe locations were selected on Brookville Road from K-140 Highway to Pleasant Hill Road. Each location involves lining the existing pipe with either a high-density polyethylene or HDPE liner or a cast-in-place fiber-reinforced resin liner. I also refer to as Omega System, and Omega is the company that, that makes the liner. They're the manufacturers. Each liner option, uh, has an advantage over the other in certain situations. The HDPE liners can easily provide additional pipe length simply by extending the liner beyond the existing pipe. Uh, locations one, two, and three required those extensions that would be difficult with the Omega System. And so they just included the HDPE liner options. The cast-in-place resin liner or Omega will form to the shape of the existing pipe. Therefore, if the existing pipe is deformed or is designed as a broken back pipe, the more rigid HDPE liner cannot be inserted through the pipe while the cast-in-place liner is inserted like a sock and inflated, um, and it forms to the existing shape of the pipe. Uh, so locations four and eleven were only bid with the Omega System because they are, uh, what's referred to as broken back pipes. Uh, in your packet, I've included pictures of each type of liner as well as a diagram of a broken back pipe for clarification purposes. Alternatives for action would be to one, accept the bid prices from Subsurface Incorporated for HDPE liner on locations one through three and five through ten, and the Omega liner on locations four and eleven. Uh, the second alternative for action would be to accept the bid prices from Subsurface Incorporated for other alternate lining types. And the third would be to reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept the bid prices from Subsurface for HDPE liners on location one through three and five through ten, and the Omega liner on locations four and eleven for an estimated cost of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Funds for these projects will be taken out of our, uh, two mil, uh, also referred to as the, the, our one-twenty-five account or our special bridge construction fund. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the staff?
A couple of questions. Their bid is quite a bit lower than not only the engineer's estimate, but also the other two bids. Is that something to do with location or of the company or?
Well, it's starting off with the, um, the engineer's estimate. Um, you know, we, this is our first of this type of project, um, that we've, um, we've put out for bid. And so we didn't really have, my staff, uh, didn't really have good data to go off of what those projects are. We had, did talk, talk with the contractor and the manufacturers of, of products to try to get an estimate. Um, and of course, um, being engineers, we're going to be conservative on our estimates. So that's why, you know, our numbers were a little bit high. And the other contractors, um, I believe they bid a, um, an HDPE pipeliner from another company. And so they were, I'm, I'm assuming that's why they were quite a bit higher. Um, this Subsurface Incorporated, they, they do a lot of, um, they specialize in pipeliners. Were these other contractors not necessarily? And so that, that could be another reason why they're, they're quite a bit more, um, less expensive.
Well, Justin, I want to thank you and your engineering department for kind of looking outside the box and looking towards this here because it's another one of those issues where, uh, one of the big time savings, I think, in looking at it is that, uh, is that you don't have the downtime of the road being closed as much. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a little, I mean, you have to direct traffic somewhere, but it's not going to be, you'd have to tear up the road with all these different deals. Is the situation where the contract, it's up to the contractor to come in and clean out those structures before they insert or before they do the sock or any of this?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's part of the bid, that they have to do the cleaning. Um, and, and with that area of the county being a lot of, mainly pasture, you know, there's not a lot of work and cleaning. There's a few of them that needs to be cleaned out, um, but, but it's really not too bad. But yeah, it's a contractor's responsibility for that. As far as the, the traffic control, yeah, the road will never have to be, uh, shut down. However, during daytime hours, a contractor will have to have some construction equipment in a lane of traffic. And so they have to provide that traffic control and flagger just to keep traffic moving, moving around, around their equipment.
That's good. And I, I know at the KAC meetings and I've looked at some of these products in the past and then I, I've always wondered why, why don't we do this? But it's like, I mean, there's different reasons here, uh, and one of the, I even, I won't even say it. But anyway, I just want to say thank you for looking outside the box and, and going this route because I think it's a, a neat deal to study it and go on this. So I look at going here. Any other questions or any comments from the public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Subsurface Inc. as presented by the staff.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two-two-five dash twenty-one Bid Award for the Brookville Road Pipelining Project. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number six.
RFA two-two-nine dash two-one Bid Award for Aggregate Shoulder Reconstruction with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning again. Uh, so yeah, so I'm here to, uh, take action on the, um, Roden Bridge Department request to award bid for aggregate shoulder construction. And these are projects where we're just adding an aggregate shoulder onto an existing pavement. That's, that's really all, um, there is as far as the construction. Sealed bids were opened on August twenty-fifth at eleven AM. We received We received one bid from A-Pac Kansas. In your packet, you should have the bid tabulations for the details of the bid. And it's pretty typical that we just get one bid for this, for this type of work, and it's usually from A-Pac. All shoulder work must be completed by January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And I have included a a project location map, which does show the locations of the work. Terms for action would be to, one, accept the bid as indicated in staff recommendation or to reject the bid and rebid the project in the future. Staff recommends to accept the bid from A-Pac Kansas for the amount of estimated work to equal one hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The funds for these projects will be taken from our contractual asphalt work. And this budget line item has a total budget of two point five million dollars. Other contractual work to be taken from this account includes chip seal, crack seal, and our hot-mix asphalt overlays. So including this shoulder project, the total combined contractual work that we have under contract is two million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public could wish to speak? I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for aggregate shoulder reconstruction to A-Pac Kansas for the amount of estimated work as requested by staff and outlined in RFA two-twenty-nine dash twenty-one.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-nine dash twenty-one bid award for aggregate shoulder reconstruction. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign?
Same sign.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven.
RFA two-two-four dash two-one bid award for Ag Hall improvements with Hannah Stanbaugh, deputy county administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. So improvements to Ag Hall were identified as part of the whole minimum maintenance and improvement items in the lease with the city for the livestock and expo center. We issued bids for windows, doors, masonry work, and exterior painting. This request is to award those bids so the materials can be ordered and the work to begin. You can see the following bids that were received for the windows, the doors, the paint, and the masonry work. Additionally, due to the age of the building and the work that needs to be done for the windows and doors, our project manager did recommend having some additional contingency funds for the masonry just in case there is some additional things that need to be done. At Mahutton, our project manager would be doing self-performing work for such things as demolition, the door and window blocking, caulking, sealants, and then the installation of all the doors and the hardware. And their fee for the project management, job supervision, and self-perform work would be thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine. So our totals, the all the low bids total with no alternates was two hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-four. Low bids with alternate number one, which would be no window grids, would be two hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen. And then the low bids with alternate number two, which would be purchasing all the doors that would be needed for replacement at Ag Hall for two hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifteen. Your alternates are number one, to award the bids with just the low bids and no alternates for two hundred and fifty-two five ninety-four. Number two, award the bids for each of the low bidders. And with the alternate, to go on ahead and purchase all the doors that are needed for a total of two hundred and ninety-four dollars and five hundred and five hundred and fifteen. Or do not award the bids and provide us with some further direction. Our staff recommendation is to award the bids to each of the low bidders, but then also to go on ahead and purchase all of the doors that are needed to be replaced for Ag Hall for the total of two hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifteen. For the budget impact, there have been funds earmarked in CIP for the improvements to the livestock and expo center. And that would be used to cover these costs. And to date, thirty-five thousand and ninety-five has been sent, has been spent for project management services and then the civil survey that was done. And I did want to note, due to shortages in material and labor, we are going to experience delays in receiving both the windows and the doors. Their estimated delivery is anywhere from twelve to fourteen weeks out. So painful, but it's the way of the world that we live in. The painting that would be done would not incur until the concrete work is done. And that is planned appropriately, so none of the touch-up work on painting would have to be done. We do have bids out for concrete right now, and those are expected to be back on the fourteenth of September and in front of the commission, probably by the twenty-eighth of September. So, and and just as a note, the prices that we saw with the bids returned were about forty-seven percent higher than estimated, just for the windows. But the remainder of everything was either slightly higher or in line with what we had anticipated. Subject to any of your questions, that is the request that is in front of you today.
Question, Hannah, the self-performing task, how are they determined? And that doesn't go through a bid process?
Right. So the contract that we signed with Hutton for project management services did allow for them to do self-perform work, provided that the county would allow them to do that. So when we received all the bids, we did ask for them to provide us with our costs for the self-perform work.
But that work wasn't included in the bid as a bid item?
Correct. Right. Right. That was not something that was bid out.
If we approve, and I'm just asking, on the windows, all of this, the the final bid here performed for the the total amount of the two ninety-four, does that include the the grids in the windows?
Yes, it does.
Okay, because it was exclusion to take them out.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're approving the grids.
Correct. Yeah, to keep with the integrity of the building.
Thank you.
If I might, one more question. I believe that there was a proposal to get some ventilation in there and such. But I don't see that in the bid. If we're doing all this work, is that, is that now off the table that there won't be any ventilation added? Or is it to be done later? And if so, wouldn't it be better to do it during this construction before you get into the painting and the caulking and the sealing and all that?
That is an excellent question, Commissioner. That, the ventilation piece of it, as far as the louvers and the vent fans that are on the building, they are scheduled to be replaced. We ran into some challenges when we were scoping this project to go out for bid that Hutton really wanted to take, take it off the table for right now to do some more research. Apparently, in the past, there's been things that have been modified to make it work. And we really need to figure out what really should we be replacing those with. So that as part of something else that is going to be coming to you next week is mechanical engineering consulting to look at that just a little bit closer. So it's still on the table, just we had to put it on pause for right now so we can make sure that we are bidding out exactly what's needed to be replaced there.
And again, thank you.
Seems like we'll be, we'll be going back and at least doing some touch-up work or or some re-caulking and painting and such. I don't know if we have the timeline perfected yet on this, but I'll leave it to smarter minds in mind to figure that out.
Well, and thank you for bringing that up because one of the other things is is coming back to that situation where I know along to one of the first proposals we had a few years back on this was to put the large fans in Ag Hall to get some circulation in there. Is that completely, is that what we're, they might look at here is what's coming?
Yes, that is, that's still coming. So if the commission remembers, we brought a phased plan for these building improvements to you several months ago. And so each phase has got certain things for each building. This is everything that's in phase one for Ag Hall. The fans for Ag Hall is in phase two, so something that we're looking at probably in twenty-twenty-three.
And if the the louvers and all of that type of equipment, I'm thinking if we're fourteen weeks out on windows and doors and stuff like that, we got quite a bit of time here to look at the louvers. I'd never thought about that. Thank you, Mr. Wees. Any other comments by the commission? Thoughts on the window grids? One way or another?
And just for the, and just the integrity of the building piece of it, just to keep with historical structure, I guess, the look.
That you like that?
Yes.
Okay, because I think that the the recommendation on the motion is to not have those. Well, that's what I asked, and she said that yes, it's included because it's going to, it's dollars to exclude the windows is X amount of dollars. So what we're approving is the full amount, which includes the grids. All right. Yes.
On the budget side of it, Hannah, how much, what what does our line item show on the budget amount right now? I mean, do we have a million dollars in there?
Yeah, great question, actually. The county administrator and I were talking about this yesterday. So we're working on something to bring back to you. So we've got about just a little over one point two million right now. That is earmarked specifically in CIP for expo center improvements.
So here regardless if there's contingencies or run into a problem, if we award this two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, there's plenty of money to go forward with any emergency or anything else that might come down the pipe.
We believe so. We're pretty comfortable with with what we have stated.
I agree.
Any other comments by the commission?
I'll go back to Commissioner Shadwick's. I don't have a calculator here, but the two hundred and ninety-four five fifteen does include the grids.
Yes, it does, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone from the public could wish to speak? I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to each of the low bidders with the alternate to purchase all doors for a total of two hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-four dash twenty-one bid award for Ag Hall improvements. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the administrator one question? The city has, I don't know, say in this or whatever, but probably to get their approval. Have they seen specs of of what work we're going after and
The only thing that we've taken back to the city is colors. We, they have approved the color scheme for the exterior painting. And we're in the process of discussing with them color scheme for the colored concrete. But the the doors and windows and that stuff, we're not running by them.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you. Item number eight.
RFA two-two-six dash two-one Framework for Expenditure of County American Rescue Plan Act Funds with Philip Smith, county administrator.
Morning, Mr. Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So as the commission is well aware, because we've discussed it numerous times, back in March, the federal government passed a large expenditure plan that includes money for every county in the United States and most of the cities and includes a little over ten and a half million dollars for right here in Sleen County. The first half of that funding, we have already received and is sitting in our bank. We have three years to figure out what we're going to spend it on and five years to actually get it spent. And so as a part of that, we've engaged in a community process to discuss what the needs are regarding recovery from the coronavirus pandemic and bringing to you today the results of that community process conducted by our consultants from iParametrics in the form of a framework for spending the the ten and a half million dollars. And there's a lengthy document that's attached to your RFA sort of goes through the background of why each of the things was selected. But Brad has brought up on the screen, almost brought up on the screen, the actual dollar amounts associated with the categories. Brad, if you want to start the PowerPoint there. So phase one is for the money that we have already received. So this is the first half of the funding. It includes two point one four million for business and nonprofit recovery. This was the most popular thing in terms of the public process. The people felt like small business really needed support from the county as as part of the recovery. The county has already done quite a bit in this area. But picked that number, that is, one point six four million of that would be going to the Slena Airport Authority per agreement that the commission has already approved. And then there's an additional five hundred thousand dollars. And we would probably work with the chamber like we did with the CRF money or potentially another interested business group to try and develop a plan for how we would get that other half million out into the community. Then there's housing. Housing was another very highly rated item for the community. We've discussed housing numerous times this year and will be discussing it again in the very next agenda item this morning. So we've dedicated a million of the first five million here toward housing. And one particular plan that we'll discuss today about how that might be spent. If that's not the way the commission wishes to spend it, then we can come back with some other ideas. There are certainly no shortage of ways to spend money on housing in the community right now. Economic and workforce development, another high priority for the respondents from the community as was water and wastewater infrastructure grants. Honestly, water and wastewater infrastructure grants are probably the first thing that I will tackle if this framework is approved by the commission today because that is the one I have been getting the most phone calls on. There are a number of small water and wastewater systems throughout the county that have some needs that they've identified and and would be looking to us for how they could could tap into some of this money. You heard from representative from City of New Cambria earlier. That is, you know, a potential sort of, they've gotten their own ARPA money, but they could potentially match their ARPA money with some of ours to to address some needs. Public safety and criminal justice, there are a couple of of different things in that bucket of money. One would be some investment in sort of long-term deterrence. But the other thing is setting aside a hundred and five thousand to roll back into the county budget over the next three years to address the current case backlog that we've experienced. So when you approved the budget last Tuesday, that included a thirty-five thousand dollar revenue from ARPA for the county attorney's office and the court system to to deal with that backlog. And just while we've been sitting here this morning, I've gotten an email from the courts that they are going to be going back to remote court. And so we shall see what that means in terms of whether that backlog actually grows. Administrative costs, the commission has previously approved work order number one with iParametrics. And that's the that number, it comes right off of that work order number one. And that's the that number. It comes right off of that work order number one. Uh, continuing public health response needs, um, that's uh, you can figure out that that's kind of a plug number to make a total up to the the bottom line of what we have. Um, but there are a number of different things that might be included in that. Um, one of those is uh, reimbursement of emergency management for some sheltering costs uh, that the uh, state is no longer covering. Um, there's the potential of getting those uh, costs reimbursed through FEMA public assistance. ARPA might be a little bit of an easier route to take for that. Um, there are some needs that uh, the health department is experiencing around uh, vaccine uh, promotion at kinds of activities. So that could be a a piece of that. Um, reimbursing the county for the costs that we have incurred for uh, the leave that has been taken for emergency paid uh, sick leave. We can only go back to March 3rd under ARPA, so there will be a a gap between December and March. Um, of course, that's right when most people took the leave, right, that we won't get reimbursed for. But anything that has occurred since March 3rd, um, we could reimburse ourselves for. And then the other um, thing that uh, that we would consider and and bring back uh, for further commission discussion is the possibility of uh, vaccine incentives for county staff, not not for the general public. Uh, and then last, but certainly not least, is a half a million dollar reserve for the future. Um, there are, as we said, there's three years to figure out what we're going to spend it on in five years to actually get it spent. So there are a lot of things that we don't know about that time. Uh, one of the categories of um, ARPA usage is uh, revenue loss. The county did not experience revenue loss in 2020. Um, but it is possible that we could experience revenue loss in 21, 22, 23, 24. And so want to um, keep some funding aside in case that does happen. If it doesn't happen, we can come back and look at other categories such as possible premium pay. Brad, if you want to go on to the next slide? So that was um, phase one. That's the money we already have in our coffers. This is a potential framework for phase two, which is the money that we would be getting uh, next May of 2022. So you could see there's another million and a half there um, for business and nonprofit recovery. So, you know, combine that with the 500,000 from phase one, you're talking $2 million or about 20% of the total um, directed at small businesses in the community. Um, those could include nonprofits, not just for-profit businesses. So um, there's uh, some ideas that uh, iParametrics threw out in the plan around you know, helping arts businesses and that kind of thing recover from the pandemic. So that's a potential use of that. Another million and a half for housing. So a total of two and a half million for um, housing between the two phases. Um, then a focus on childcare in particular regarding workforce development. We strategically put this in the second phase because um, we uh, allocated quite a bit of funding for childcare in our coronavirus relief fund and I did not frankly, get a lot of uptake on that. Childcare is a very challenging uh, subject to deal with. And so uh, we're hoping maybe somebody will figure it out for us between now and next May and and uh, have a clearer idea of what funding that could go towards. Uh, broadband infrastructure. So uh, ARPA is specific to allowing um, infrastructure costs only for water, wastewater and broadband. So we cannot use it, for example, to upgrade a mile of of Tinkler Road. Um, but we can use it to upgrade water, wastewater and broadband there. Um, although the majority, vast majority of Saline County residents live within the city of Salina, which has pretty decent broadband service, you don't have to travel very far outside of the city limits of Salina to get a really poor internet service. And so, um, there are a number of companies that are looking at that. Um, uh, Cox has has talked about expansion plans, uh, some other um, providers have as well. So thought it would be important to reserve some funding for that, but wanted to make that specific that that is only to the extent that they cannot get money from the state or the feds because um, there's a lot of broadband money out there right now. So want people to tap into that um, first before coming to the county. Uh, poverty reduction, um, not really defined as specifically what that entails yet. But one of the pieces of recovery from the uh, pandemic is, you know, helping people with the greater economic opportunities. And so um, that was something that um, came, you know, decently highly ranked in the community survey and wanted to devote uh, some funding toward that. Uh, another sort of plug number for future administrative costs. Uh, and then 500, just a shade over 500,000 for future community needs. Again, as with the 500,000 in phase one reserved for future use, um, this is another opportunity to see, okay, what else comes along uh, in um, in in the next three years that is is a real community need that we need to attach some dollars to. So that's the second half of funding. Of course, first half, second half equals the total. Um, and uh, as I've said, this is a framework that if approved by the commission would allow staff to go forth and start developing specific programs that meet each of these um, categories. And then we would bring those programs back to the commission for approval. Then we would take applications under each of those programs, bring them back to you for awards. So certainly not the last time that that you will have input into the process, but needed a place to sort of start. And so this is what we have come up with, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and take feedback from you.
Okay, any comments from the commission?
I think a lot of thought has gone into the amounts, and I'm sure that that was really hard. Um, you know, because they're all important. How how flexible is that? Say if uh, you know, the broadband, if everybody gets taken care of with some of the other pots of money for broadband, does that mean that you still have to spend that much on broadband or is it flexible?
Um, it is imminently flexible, Commissioner. Um, that is one of the great things about this. These are just sort of starting amounts.
Right.
If we find out, um, for example, I I will just um, talk a little bit about um, our experience with CRF and the um, the support for small businesses. Everybody wants to help small businesses. And so when you ask people on a survey, that gets very, very highly ranked. So we've devoted $2 million toward that, you know, beyond what we're doing for the airport. Um, but our experience through CRF was um, there were a limited number of applicants who chose to apply, met the criteria, whatever that that looked like. And so um, it is entirely possible that we would not need um, 2 million, you know, certainly if the economy continues to to do well and community continues to develop and and generate, you know, other money into small businesses locally, it's possible that we would not need all of that funding and could devote it to one of the other categories. Broadband's another great example. I hope we don't spend a penny on broadband, frankly. Um, but um, wanted to have that out there because we know that that's a need in the community. You know, if we don't spend it on broadband, it's something that could come back. Maybe there will be a need for a second round of water wastewater grants. Um, because that's certainly a hot topic. Or um, you know, uh, there's a couple of things that we're holding in the back pocket like premium pay um, that we could look at if if we don't spend it in these categories.
Well, that that kind of takes care of my questions, that we're not locked into these numbers that are up there. Uh, but we are pretty well see a framework there for the what we're going to spend it on or what we'd like to spend it on. Uh, probably not to exceed those numbers, but we potentially could. And part of that, my question or response there is is due to the fact of uh, what's coming up next on the agenda hasn't been approved yet, and yet we're kind of approving that if that were locked in, but that's not the case. So I'm I'm good with that.
Yeah, and um, and certainly I wanted to have this item first. So you guys can tell me whether you want to spend a million dollars on housing? And then we'll discuss how you want to spend the million dollars on housing and and, you know, so.
Believe believe me, that thought was in my mind as to why this was the cart and the horse and so forth. So now I understand.
I I think it's a great uh, roadmap to navigate us through the these funds. But when you talk about criterias, uh, does does ARPA have their own criteria that that needs to be followed as far as uh, small businesses uh, of getting some monies? Or is that something that that we will have to develop the criterias?
Yes.
Yes, on both?
Yeah. Um, so for broadband, for example, some small business is a little um, the ARPA language is a little bit more flexible on small business. But broadband, I'll take broadband because that's a a better example. And there are minimum standards in ARPA. You can only use ARPA money to fund broadband if it has certain speeds. So you have to hit that threshold. But then it would be up to us to say, okay, what areas are we going to target? Um, you know, how how much experience does a company have to have to, you know? Do you want startups or do you want established providers, you know, that sort of thing? So there's there's a sort of a floor that ARPA sets. And then there are probably additional details that we would come up with on top of that.
Well, heaven forbid that we would send any money back to the feds. So let's get to spending, figuring out where we're going to go with it and and do the best that we can as far as allocating it.
And Mr. Minister. Excuse me, I I appreciate the fact that we aren't under such a tight timeframe like we were with the last funds that we had to uh, get out. So we we do have a pretty big window here to to navigate all this through and and get to get the right solutions.
When the time comes, who are the groups or entities applying to? The county or to this group that we have hired?
They're applying to the county.
Okay.
Ultimately, it's the five of you who will be making the decisions on awards.
Right.
Um, they might be applying through iParametrics rather, I mean, iParametrics has some systems that they've already got in place.
And I'm assuming they have forms that, I mean, we're not re, the county is not reinventing the wheel on this. I mean, they've they've got the paperwork to to fill out and everything. Makes sense.
Quick question here is like when you mentioned New Cambria has got some ARPA money, did all cities get ARPA money? And does Salina, the city of Salina, get some ARPA money too?
Yes, so um, the way that ARPA uh, allocated, um, so I'll just say ARPA is the name of the entire act. What we're talking about here, our measly little 10 and a half million is called the uh, coronavirus local fiscal relief fund, CLFRF. And so the way the CLFRF worked is um, I believe it was 65.1 billion went to counties. And that got divided up amongst counties around the country based on population. And then another, I think it was also 65.1, something around that same neighborhood, went to cities. For entitlement cities, which are generally cities of populations over 50,000, they got their funding directly as we did. So there are, I believe, nine of those cities in the state of Kansas that got money directly from the federal government, the same way that all the counties did. For cities with populations under 50,000, they're called NEUs, non-entitlement units. And their money went to the state. And then the state, not just Kansas, but all 50 states were in charge of then redirecting that money back to the smaller cities. And there was some confusion because um, what constitutes a city is different in different parts of the country. Some states have towns and townships and villages and all sorts of things. So there was this um, level of confusion when when the act was first passed about whether townships would get some of the funding, right? And um, ultimately, what they determined is a township might be a city in Michigan, but a township is not a city in Kansas. And so um, the state came out with rules for the non-entitlement units. And um, the city of Salina happens to be the largest non-entitlement unit because they're just, you know, right under 50,000 people. Um, and so um, all of the the cities, except for those nine at the top, got their money from the state. The state process is about a month behind the federal process. So we got our money in May. I think the city of Salina got their money around 4th of July, sometime in that neighborhood. Um, they, their share is about 7 million. Um, uh, because they are, you know, have a lot of people. Um, the smaller cities, all 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 five of the other cities got money, but they're in the 25 to 50,000 dollar range.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any from the public could wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Saline County ARPA framework as presented.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 226-21 Framework for Expenditure of County American Rescue Plan Act Funds. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine.
RFA 227-21 City of Salina Public Hearing for Southview Estates Rural Housing Incentive District with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Mr. Administrator.
Good morning again. Um, so uh, we've talked about this subject a couple of times previously. The the city of Salina, the the community in general, and particularly the city of Salina are experiencing um, a housing crunch, and there is a need for additional housing in this community um, to uh, deal with the great economic development successes that we've had over the last um, year or so. Um, unfortunately, as regards the county, that presents us with a really tough decision. Because the proposal for a rural housing incentive district is um, a tax increment redirection for um, all of the property tax paying or property tax receiving entities. Um, but the county, because the because the state 20 mil share for education is excluded, uh, the county ends up being um, the largest contributor to a uh, tax increment redirection. And um, so that really puts us in the unenviable position of of trying to balance a, you know, what's what's in the best long-term what's what's in the best long-term interest of Saline County as an organization and the services that we need to provide to the community versus, you know, on the other side of that balance scale, the the community need, right? And what's what's best for creating housing in the community? So so I'm asking you all to make a very tough decision today, and that is whether or not Saline County intends to object to the formation of a rural housing incentive district for the Southview Estates. The city of Salina has noticed a public hearing on this matter for Monday, the 13th of September. And so I wanted to bring this item to your board in advance of that. We do have 30 days after the hearing to actually pass a an objection, and that would come back in the form of a resolution. But wanted you all to to give some direction to staff in advance of the city's public hearing. I will also hearken back to the item that you just approved, which is the the one sort of shining light in this situation is the potential for using some of the funding from ARPA to partially offset the the loss of future tax revenue to the county. So that if the county chose not to object to the formation of the RHID, there would be a redirection of approximately 2 and 1/4 million over a 25-year period. If you chose to take that 1 million in Phase One housing money that you just approved in the ARPA framework and enter into an agreement to contribute that to water and wastewater infrastructure for Southview Estates, then that money would come back up to the amount of the tax increment that's actually redirected over that 25-year period. And that equates to around 45% of what we would be foregoing. So there's, that is, you know, a little ameliorating factor, I guess you could say. But in general, the the choice that that we are facing is between looking out for our future taxation or addressing, helping the city address housing needs. So I think that kind of frames the issue, and I'm sure there are questions, and I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Well, I've got questions for certain. First, I mean, I'm, in theory, I'm behind this program. I'm good with it. But it's my understanding that the city has yet to vote on this, and they have not said it's going to be 25 years. I don't see that anywhere in any of this documentation that there's going to be 25 years. As a matter of fact, I've heard through the grapevine that they're probably not going to propose 25 years. But yet, that's what the very last sentence here says, this is over a 25-year period. So are, we can go back. I guess my question would be, can we still object? And I think you've answered that, as we do not know what the city's plan and recommendation is. So we do have that 30-day window after they vote for us to object. Is that correct?
Okay. So there were several things kind of rolled up in there, Commissioner Vidrickson. So for starters, you're correct that the public hearing notice provided by the city does not make reference to the term of the agreement. The 25-year term is in the development agreement between the city and the developers. And that, you are, you are correct, that has not yet been approved by the city commission. That wouldn't be approved by the city commission until they decide whether they're forming the district, which would be after the public hearing. We cannot contingently object. We can't, we can't object to just the term and say we're fine with everything else but the 25 years. What we could do, and I've talked to county counselor about this, we could send a letter stating an intention to object unless that term is shortened. And then, yes, we would have 30 days after the hearing to come back and decide whether we would actually object or not. So the city, so if, just as a scenario, you could say, we're not, we like the project, but we're not okay with the term. Please draft a letter. I could come back to you next Tuesday with a letter for your approval saying, you know, we intend to object if the term is not shortened. Deliver that to the city on the 13th. They could then continue their hearing, give the developer time to go back and figure out whether a shorter timeframe would work for the financials of the project, come back and and conclude the hearing and adopt or not. And then then we would then have that information about what the city has done and what the developer has done, that we could then decide by October 12th whether we wished to object.
Well, I don't, it seems to me like that we've got the cart before, not we, but someone has the cart before the horse here. We're being asked to approve something that we don't know what we're going to be approving. And that that troubles me a little bit. Like I said, in theory, I'm behind the the project. For me to sit here and object to the 25 years, I really don't even have the information to be able to do that with. I mean, off the top of my head, I said, man, that's too long. But maybe that's what's got to be. I don't know. I don't, I don't have enough information for me to to really jump up and stand behind it. But I wish, I wish to, I just don't understand why, why this process is going in this direction with us voting first to approve it when there is, we really don't have something to approve.
My assumption is, and I don't know this, is if we object today, they don't hold the public hearing and spend all that time.
Well, the same thing's going to happen, is it not, if we object later?
I'm with you. I'm just saying I can, I can understand their thought processes. Hey, the county's not on board. Why are we going to all this trouble at the public hearing? And it's just a done deal.
Well, and
But I understand what you're saying.
I personally am on board to, for the foundation of it. I may object later on when I find out what the city is proposing totally. I assume that we all have that option.
Well, you have 25 days after, or I'm sorry, 30 days after the public hearing to pass a resolution of objection. So, you know, what steps the city will take after the conclusion of the public hearing, I believe they intend to go forward with passing a development agreement if there are no objections launched at the public hearing. But that's obviously a decision for their commission. So hopefully, at some point between September 13th and October 12th, you would know whether they have passed that or not. I believe they intend to do that, and so you could make a decision at that time.
And that having been said, in theory, I'm behind it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I really struggle with the length of this, 25 years. That is a long, long way out there. We hear from our constituents all the time about property taxes and and the amount they're having to pay and what can we do to reduce our property taxes? Well, the more players you have participating, the lower your taxes supposedly can get. We're removing this entity from any taxation for 25 years, and yet we're still going to be running a sheriff's department, a jail, a health department, all the, all the departments upstairs that come with an expense. And to exempt that for 25 years is, even if there was no, no growth of expenses for the county, if you, if you brought this parcel into the taxation process, it would lower everyone's property taxes. I'm sure the argument is, without it, you won't have it anyway. But like Commissioner Vidrickson, I, 25 years of tax exemption seems quite a ways out there. I believe that the Lee, Lee building was done under the same, same type of, no? Okay.
This is the first proposed rural housing incentive district in Saline County. I, the Lee building might have been done under an industrial revenue bond or a
Tax credit.
Tax credit, but yeah, not a rural housing.
Did it impact the property taxes that that were paid on the property? I mean, you have these different
Right.
items that can divert property tax monies. And how much can the citizens, you know, the city of Salina will recoup a lot of funds back through sales tax and such? We don't have that capability so much. It will help the jail, I guess, with more players to help with that bond. But I guess we just wait and see what they do propose. But on the surface, 25 years will be very difficult for me to swallow, but we'll see.
And I, good point, but it's like, I have a lot of other concerns. And one of my first concerns is, is, you know, it's like going to some of the meetings and they're talking about, you know, a proposed, you know, mobile home parks and this new other housing development over by Menards. And I just wonder if the city requires them to put in the safety precautions for tornado shelters? Do these new buildings have to propose this? I look at this here as a, as a tax incentive here for the Saline County. I'm looking at this whole proposal, I'm looking at the plans, and I look at the whole situation here. And I don't see any, any recommendations for any housing or any place for protection for this whole housing development to go to because it's all slab houses. And and I'm just wondering, is this a real, I mean, I just look at, that's one of the things that bothers me here of where we were at in this safety issue here on this whole new development. I mean, where do we go down the road with having taxpayer money going into something like this? I just, that's one of my thoughts. I just see that side.
Well, there is no taxpayer money going into this. It's just, it's just a receipt of tax revenue down the line. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, but
There's no taxpayer money being allocated.
Okay, well, for the next 25 years, I pay tax in Saline County.
I understand.
And those people aren't.
No, they pay taxes.
Oh. Yeah, the tax, uh, tax, yeah, they still pay the tax, but it goes to paying off their, the buildings and all the, the infrastructure. Yes.
Yeah, and I understand that. And that is, that, that is, that is a hard part about
Yes.
any type of tax incentives when somebody gets it and somebody doesn't. I think in this situation, it's proven that the free market system is not working on bringing in housing. And so you do have to think a little bit outside the box, and there are some painful decisions to be made. And so, you know, your point is, you and I, all, all we're doing here is shifting the tax burden to everybody else. And so, and that's, that's uncomfortable for me, but I get back to, the free market system is not working, and and we need, we need more tools in the toolbox to bring in developers. And so the 25 years bothers me a little bit, too. And but overall, I can't object to this. Again, as a, as a county commissioner, you know, 80% of our constituents are in the city of Salina. So, I mean, this is, this is somewhat our decision also.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the commission?
One thing I will say, I, it's kind of opening Pandora's Box. I appreciate the city to go out and try to find answers to, solutions to their problems. And and I believe that they're on the right track here. Once you start these RHIDs, I mean, it's going to be, I'm sure there'll be others wanting to get on the bandwagon, and they'll have to decide then. But we, we can't, we can't as a government, agency, or a county, or a city, continue to do these property tax incentives and throw all the burden back on to the the population at hand. So I guess, I'm, I'm going to say, we'll wait and see what comes out of their 13th meeting and what their final decision is, and then it'll come back to us, I guess, or can come back to us. I think they might be looking for some type of, where are you on this right now? Like Commissioner Shadwick said, should we even go any further with it? So
Yeah, I'm assuming if this was a 5-0 vote against it right then, it's a moot point for them to go forward. I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with making a motion to not object at this time, assuming that that's everybody else's decision, too. So
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner White speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The action before the board as of right now is yea or nay, and I think it's premature to make any action whatsoever with the city's official action on September 13th and 30 days plus. I heard Phil explain he's referred to counsel in regards to submitting a letter to bring forward the board for official approval next year, directing our concerns on the 25-year span. And I would, I would be more comfortable prolonging this for another week and get up to speed and proceed from there.
Okay.
A question to our county administrator. What is, what does another week get us? Are you in the same position next week?
I'm not sure what position I'm in right now, frankly.
Well, you're asking, you're asking for a motion, so, yeah.
So what I had suggested in response to a question from Commissioner Vidrickson was that one possible way to object without objecting would be to send a letter. And I think that's what Commissioner White picked up on was my response there. Commissioner Shadwick, I understand you were prepared to make a motion to not object at this time, which is an entirely different train of thought. So
Right.
So if, if your motion wins the day, then I would not be bringing a letter back next week, and we would just see what happens on the 13th and, and then go from there. So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you haven't asked for any public comment yet, or is that your intention?
I'm still waiting, waiting for the county commission to get done.
Well, there was a mo, there was, I heard a motion, that's
No, I did not make
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still listening to the county commissions.
Right.
Okay.
I want my fellow commissioners to know that the letter does not bother me either. I mean, if the majority of this group wants that, too, I mean, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward without a letter, but if, but if two or three of you want to do that, then that's, that's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop that.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public could wish to speak?
And that kind of concerns me, too, is that we don't have the public speaking. And so maybe it's, it's not a big we don't have the public speaking and, uh, so maybe it's, it's not a big issue as what I think it is. So.
Well, we'll see where it goes. We'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we approve RFA two twenty-seven dash twenty-one City of Salina Public Hearing for Southview Estates Rural Housing Incentive District.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-seven dash twenty-one City of Salina Public Hearing for Southview Estates Rural Housing Incentive District. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I would prefer a roll call vote seeing as how I'm not present.
Okay. Take off. Excuse me. You all right? Commissioner White?
Nay.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item ten.
RFA two-two-eight dash two-one overdose dated to Action Grant, Jason Tiller Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. How's Mr. Tiller doing today?
Oh, surviving like every day before and every day. Before you have the request for action, uh, this is for the year three, uh, project grant for the overdose data to action grant. Um, with a focus on overdose prevention in Slayne County. This has helped facilitate partnership building, community education to, uh, related to opioid prevention, opioid data sharing, um, and improving referral processes around substances. Uh, the grant is for fifty thousand dollars for the period of September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The alternatives for action, um, we can sign this grant digitally. So it would be to authorize myself to sign the, the grant, return it to K D A G, uh, refuse the grant or send us back for more information. Uh, we would recommend signing the grant to allow us to finish out this three-year project. With an impact on opioid use. And if this grant or this project is not funded, then the direct work, um, for year three wouldn't be able to occur. And we would just finish out a couple of the projects started in year two. Questions?
Has it been working?
Well, uh, I don't exactly know a hundred percent yet because we have been, uh, in year two was where we began developing the dashboard based off the needs assessment that was developed in year one. Of course, COVID has put a lot of damper on much of the partnership work. Um, it was intended to be a much larger partnership, but it's had to be a much smaller one with CKF. Um, and small other partners, smaller partners, uh, at this time. So, uh, once the dashboard is up, which should be, I believe, later this fall. And then in year three, we're working with CKF. Um, besides education, uh, opportunities like mental health first aid, uh, which, uh, has been, we've had a couple of them so far. One of them has been open to the county staff. Um, also we will be working with them on a peer navigator project, which is, um, working with those that have overcome addiction to help train them on how to work with other people that are going through addiction. Um, and being a resource person. So that's a project that we'll be working on a year three with CKF in this project.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by the commission? Anyone from the public could wish to speak? I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the Health Department Director to digitally sign the OD TA grant as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-two-eight dash twenty-one overdose data to action grant. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Informational items.
Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning again. Feels like I was just here. So for this departmental update, of course, this is going to cover the first half of this year, essentially from February till about mid-August. Um, and despite COVID and all of its challenges that we faced in last year, we have had and been working on some other non-COVID related, um, things. I mentioned the OD two-eight information earlier. Um, we have also been able to hire new staff in our administration clinic, childcare licensing and home health departments, which is also included. Um, hiring, uh, several temporary case investigators, uh, to deal with um, early on surge and then as natural attrition and case numbers decreased. And now as we're dealing with the, uh, Delta variant surge and have had to add additional, uh, staff for that one. With our new clinic builder, we'll be able to expand the types of insurance that we take and potentially some other revenue streams. Um, and also be able to provide some other services that we originally were not able to. Uh, we have also been updating processes, uh, in trying to find efficiencies and streamline some processes. Um, as well as tradition or transitioning some of our processes to electronic formats, uh, to reduce the amount of papers that have to be printed, uh, copies, um, time spent shuttling back and forth and re-scanning and, and so forth, um, and saving us some, uh, dollars there. Due to the rising need, of course, for temporary staff, uh, we have pretty much used just about every available space that we have to put, uh, working bodies in. And so during this time too, we had purchased with, uh, some COVID dollars, a twenty-foot container to store some of our non-temperature controlled items in, which has, um, allowed us to free up some other space. Um, as an extension of our COVID communication efforts, we revamped our radio, our PSAs, our social media. And even, you know, using YouTube videos and podcasts, uh, to also focus on some staff spotlight over the last few months, but also other public health topics that are out there such as breastfeeding, uh, HIV awareness, et cetera. Um, earlier this year, we began working with, uh, some staff from KU and their academic public health area on a public health innovation project. With one of the goals was to be to complete a detailed strategic plan, uh, for the next three to five years. And that, uh, two-day planning process was originally planned for last week. But due to COVID and some other, uh, things that have been going on, we have decided to temporarily pause that project um, until a little bit later when staff have the, uh, creative ability. Um, and they're not trying to deal with COVID on a daily basis and be able to focus on, on really being able to think through that process. Um, and when it's not such a concern about putting the entire leadership, uh, in one room at one time as well as anybody else. Um, so that will be rescheduled for a little bit later on. Uh, coming up, of course, we'll continue to train new staff, deal with the ever-changing conditions of COVID. Um, and that also includes trying to mitigate staff burnout. You know, burnout is not really, it's not only affecting, uh, hospital staff, uh, it's affecting healthcare staff in all settings. And that does not exclude, uh, public health departments. I've mentioned the rescheduling of our strategic planning. Uh, remaining flexible and dealing with COVID and, and other challenges. Cause we really don't know what the fall is going to bring, uh, in terms of cases and other uh, COVID-related challenges. Um, flu season is coming up, so we still will be doing our flu clinic in October. Uh, we are going to be starting that planning here very soon because of course that's about a month or so down the road. Uh, we are very well versed in that aspect since we have done it for so many years. Um, the question that we have yet to answer is, will we try to do an inside clinic at four H building or will it just be a strictly a drive-through clinic? And some of that is just going to depend on, uh, staffing and the current conditions with, uh, COVID as we get a little bit closer. And we'll have information about all of that coming out here in the next few weeks. Um, that also includes information about the, uh, a booster COVID shots, um, that has been talked about. And we are working with our planning partners on how we may handle that when that time comes. And we are still kind of waiting on some of the protocol information around those for the, uh, doing the actual third shot boosters. Um, and in fact, we have another planning meeting on Thursday. So we'll have information about that coming out soon as well. Our budget, um, my finance officer tells me that we are doing pretty well. And both the expenditures and revenues, we of course had, had several grants. But some of the areas that we had, um, you know, had put in for expenditures were things like travel and training, um, which much of that has been shifted um, either to online, uh, virtual, um, or just has not occurred. So we've had some of those fluctuations up and downs and monies that we haven't spent that we had planned for that we normally would. So either way, we are looking, um, fairly good on both our revenue and, and our expense. One other thing that we have done this past year that has helped with that is that we upgraded our credit card system. Uh, we had an older system before. It was actually, um, with our new finance officers, uh, dug into the numbers and it was actually charging us a little bit higher percentage for each transaction. Uh, we found a different system, uh, and a different vendor, uh, which has also then allowed us to be able to do online payments. Um, and also allowed for, uh, for instance, when, uh, childcare providers need to pay their, their, um, registration fees or, you know, that type of stuff. Um, they can actually do that with the, uh, childcare licensing surveyor. You know, she can pull up her tablet, they can pay it online. Um, and is actually, we've seen some increase in, uh, revenue that way as well. You know, that's a huge convenience for most people, being able to pay online as opposed to writing and sending checks and the time that that takes. That is the end of my update and I do have just a couple of, uh, updates on numbers for COVID if you want to hear those as well. So to say that this last month has been hard would be an understatement. Yesterday we reported our cases, our, our case total has been up to seven thousand three hundred and four now. To put that in a little perspective over the last few months with new cases. Um, and you may remember some of these numbers from my last COVID update here in June or July. But in May, we had seventy-eight new cases. In June, we had eighty-seven, July, three hundred and seventy-three. And as of yesterday afternoon, and we still have one day left in August, five hundred and sixty-eight new cases. We have had fifteen new deaths in the, the month of August as well. Hospitalizations, of course, continue to trend up. Um, although earlier in this month, they were at a high of twenty-seven at one point. And now they have been averaging about seventeen to nineteen in that neighborhood per day. Keep in mind though, that those are not the same patients. Um, it's almost as if, um, as they have COVID patients that are discharged or unfortunately pass away. There is another COVID patient that requires inpatient care who is taking up a, or gets moved to a bed. Vaccinations have been not fully stagnant, but they have been at about four hundred or so new people vaccinated per week, which is about a half to point eight of a percent of new vaccine or new vaccinated per week. It will be interesting tomorrow, and we're trying to put together a new graphic tomorrow and, and kind of moving forward. Uh, but it'll be interesting tomorrow to see how the impact or what kind of impact the full approval of Pfizer has had on those getting vaccinated. That has been for quite a while, one of the, uh, top reasons for, um, that have been offered for why somebody hasn't gotten vaccinated. And now that that has received full approval, uh, we'll see what kind of impact that has on vaccination rates over the next couple of weeks, since it was just this past Monday, I believe, last Monday that it was, um, fully approved. So we should see some sort of hopefully impact on that when I get my report from the state tomorrow. Um, with that, if there are questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Uh, the, uh, three times a week, the health department sends out a, a, an update on COVID and so forth. Uh, on that sheet, there are like four bullet points on what to do or what, you know, how to combat it. Number one was to, uh, stay at home if you don't feel well. And number two said, get tested even if you don't think it's COVID. I fell into that category over the weekend, uh, not feeling well. And, uh, yesterday I called and got an appointment to be tested. Uh, from the time that I arrived and called into the nurse and, and left the facility was less than two minutes. That's how quickly you can get, it, it doesn't take any time to, to get tested. Obviously I'm here today, so my test uh, result came back within two hours and I was negative. And, uh, I just want to encourage everybody, if you don't feel well, uh, Salina family, uh, call over there and get an appointment and get in there and get tested and, and it relieves, uh, a lot of stress. It also, uh, makes you comfortable being around other people. So get tested if you don't feel well. It's, it's very simple. I mean, I didn't leave my car. The nurse came out and like I said, I was there from the time I called to the time I left was less than two minutes. So I encourage everybody to get tested if you don't feel well.
And that's a good point because that's one thing that we see a lot. And anybody that has ragweed allergies right now probably knows what I'm talking about. You know, as far as congestion, drainage and many of those, um, symptoms where you just don't feel well because you have all those. But that's been probably the number one thing that we have heard this entire thing was that I thought it was my allergies. And it just drives home the fact that, um, if you're not feeling well, if you have any, any concern at all about whether this may or may not be, the best thing to do is to just go get tested so that you can be sure that you are not inadvertently, um, you know, causing an impact to your office, to your family, um, or to anybody else around you.
And quick deal for, for the general public out here. Do they call their local doctor or who, who would they go to to get that?
For tests, they can call, uh, Salina family. They can call, uh, Stat Care Urgent Care. Um, we have on our Facebook page, um, and then the state also has a locator. Um, but there are, eh, even I still believe CVS and Walgreens are doing this. So there's plenty of places to get tested, just as there are plenty of places to get vaccinated, uh, as well. So.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jason. Item two.
Petition requesting attachment of lands rural water district number four with Jamie Doss County Clerk.
Morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Um, uh, the county clerk's office received a letter on August tenth, twenty twenty-one from Stumbo Hanson LP regarding the attachment of land to rural water district number four. Evidence was unable to be found that the property owner by, uh, the property owned by Sandy Walker Trust number one and land owned by Eric and Adrian had previously been attached to rural water district number four. Because the district is already serving these properties and has been doing so for many years, the landowners requesting to formally be attached to the territory of rural water district number four. In addition, Trenton and Emily Page have recently requested water service from the district. Um, the district representatives have stated that, um, Mrs. Walker and Mr. Adrian do not wish to sign the request for petitioning due to not understanding the petitioning process. Rural Water District number four has obtained requests for petitioning signatures from, uh, Trenton and Emily Page. And as a result, have met the fifty percent signatures of the, uh, relevant landowners. So according to KSA eighty-two A six twenty-three, the county clerk is to give notice to the county commissioners of the filing of petition. And the commissions are scheduled to, um, then schedule a hearing thirty days from the date of filing. Um, we will be sending out notice, um, to the landowners of the hearing, uh, which is scheduled for next week, September seventh. Um, and a copy of the petition and notice, um, has also been sent to the chief. Um, and a copy of the petition and notice um has also been sent to the Chief Engineer Division of Water Resources. Um, so I'm just informing you of of what we were looking at and um the petition will be scheduled uh for hearing next week, but that is within the thirty days.
Any comments or questions by the commission? Okay, thank you, Jamie. Item three.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Just a couple of items for uh this morning. Um, first off, uh, wanted to mention the possibility of a visioning discussion. If you will recall, last uh December, we had uh one meeting where we didn't have a lot of items uh on the agenda, and so we used that time to kind of um set some uh direction for twenty-twenty-one and uh thought that was very helpful in the um budget process this year. And so would um like to sort of do that again, maybe in a little more robust format this year. And um so just wanted um the commission to start thinking about that and um probably bring back something to you in the future meeting to uh find some dates in December where we could go ahead and and have that conversation, so. Uh, the other thing is an update on uh broadcasts of our meetings. Um, I have not yet received any uh written um notice from the city of Slina, which I've requested a couple of times. But I do understand um that they are moving equipment this week. Um, I believe that that started um or the the folks were here starting yesterday and um the equipment move is uh today. Uh, and um, so I don't believe that we are on channel twenty today. And I think it remains to be seen uh whether we will be on there next Tuesday as well because um the the city will not be meeting on Monday for because of the the Labor Day holiday, so. Um, we are continuing to work on that issue and just as a reminder to um folks that we uh do broadcast the meetings uh via Zoom and YouTube. And uh certainly, um, folks can access those through the county's website and uh few past meetings, et cetera. So um hoping that we will get all this resolved soon, but it hasn't been yet.
All right. Item number four.
Commissioners comments?
Item five?
Announcements.
Everybody enjoyed their Labor Day weekend? Anything else?
Going to a study session?
Emergency operations plan.
Okay. Oh, that must be you.
Sorry, had I known it was gonna be this long, um, I would not have come so really.
Nor did we.
Yeah.
Well, then I will find you before. Oh, perfect. Um, so as you remember, two months ago, I was back um before you to get the signature for the emergency operations plan so I could submit it. Since this year, it is up for renewal for four years. Um, you guys signed it. I submitted it to the state. It got approved. Uh, the next step in that process is the adoption of the plan, which I plan to bring before you next Tuesday. But I wanted to take this opportunity today to kind of make sure that you guys have a solid understanding of what's in the plan, your guys' role with it, and then if you have any questions um to kind of answer those. Also, to caveat, um, another thing that will be joining this um adoption letter next Tuesday is an extension to the disaster declaration for uh the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which ties in with your emergency operations plan. So that's mentioned too in your handout. Um, so essentially, why do you need an emergency operations plan aside from it being a state statute? Um, it also provides a a nice balance between the responsibilities of both public and private sectors, the resources um that each of them have and the responsibilities that they're willing to take on to maintain uh life safety and protection of property. So the five main roles of the commission within the emergency operations plan um is to adopt all emergency plans um as well as standards for emergency management, which you guys have always done, and I just ask that you continue to do. Um, to declare a state of emergency, you guys are the authority that deems that um for any disaster, whether it be a tornado, a hurricane, or a public health crisis. Um, you can impose restrictions uh during an emergency. With that being said, most people interpret that that to mean curfews when there's tornado and we're trying to do debris removal and things like that uh through the public health crisis that did kind of take on another shape and form. Um, I mention it in the sense that it is meant for the response and recovery phase of a disaster. Um, also to instill confidence and consistency in the community, you guys do a fantastic job of um presenting yourself as a united front when talking to the public as well as your constituents. So us as first responders and command staff really appreciate that from you guys. And then to delegate the responsibilities of command objectives and tactical operations to those qualified incident commanders and first responders. Um, by you guys doing so, it just instills your confidence and trust um in the people that you've hired to do the jobs that you've hired them to do. So uh what else is included in that emergency operations plan is all the other plans that we have for Saline County to include the department coop plans, the hazard mitigation plan, and then the preparedness plan that we outline our uh three-to-five-year objective goal for planning and preparedness. Um, to caveat, the coop plan for the departments um has gotten a lot of attention from the state. They really appreciate the um, the work and efforts that each department head has put into their coop plans. Um, I think IT a lot because um what started out in twenty-nineteen is a a theoretical coop plan. Thanks to the pandemic, it actually got to be put into place and some modifications and adjustments were made to actually getting to to exercise that plan. Um, so the plan is not only used during a disaster. Um, I refer to it quite often. It's always open in my web browser. Um, it holds critical facilities um list, contact and position information. Um, as funny as that may sound, the city changes personnel a lot, and it's a nice way to just know who's working in the Parks Department that day. Um, and also, uh, we use it for annexes. So prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, uh, the ESF eight group for health and medical would meet quarterly. Unfortunately, we're not meeting under that title anymore. Um, but I did want to note that that first well, the last meeting we had before the COVID-nineteen pandemic, on average, there's roughly eight to twelve of us that would show up to that. There was roughly thirty-five entities that showed up to that last EF ESF eight meeting. And my point to that is it was just a little bit too late for them to start that planning process because after that, it was roughly two and a half, three months till the pandemic actually started. If they had been a part of that and participating a little bit sooner, they would have gotten those policies and procedures and kind of worked through some of those pickups that we had earlier if they had just come to the table a little bit sooner. So I put in that quote there to remember when disaster strikes, the time to preparedness has passed. Um, and then the last note that I have for you guys um on the back, which I think is probably the most important going into next Tuesday, is the reasoning behind a state of emergency, which would be declared for any type of disaster, is the um opening us up to public assistance if the state declares as well and the federal government approves it. And then um to cover us against tort liability and to provide us with state resources. So one of the things that the resources that we're being able to do now due to the disaster declaration that we have, like Phil mentioned, we are still offering COVID shelter even though the state has um restricted that. But with the requirements that FEMA has put in place for COVID shelter, um, it is very limited to the specific populations that we can serve. So where we went to servicing over two hundred people with the state shelter, I've only serviced seven because they meet the federal government's criteria for sheltering. So are there any questions or comments about either item for next week?
Just quick question here. I mean, because reading this, it kind of hits me on this on this plan situation here with this housing project. Do you know in 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 year four, in the city here, do we have a documentation that says that, okay, like they should provide some sort of housing or sheltering for a group?
I was gonna say, we we don't. Um, I know there's only one. There's no community like storm shelters in the city of Slina. There is uh one mobile home community that has taken upon themselves to include that in their uh development area, uh, but they are the only ones that I know of, and it's only applicable for those residents living in that community. But it is concerning when you have a bunch of people coming from out of state that have never lived through a tornado, don't know what to expect from them because in instances like that, when the sirens go off, their first call is to dispatch to ask them what to do, um, especially if they don't have a place to go, if they don't have a basement or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. I just just wanted to ask. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Joe. All right. Any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.